All righty, it's five o'clock and I'd like to call the July 24th, 2025 work session of the Stanton City Council to order. And before we begin, we have two members of city council who are waiting to join this meeting virtually. So I will start first, ladies first, with Councilor Park. On July 10th, 2025, I received a request from Councilor Park to participate remotely in the July 24, 2025 Stanton City Council meeting due to a personal matter that prevents her physical attendance at the meeting. Pursuant to the Freedom of Information Act, I will now ask Councilor Park to state the personal matter that makes her unable to attend tonight's meeting.
We are out of town on my husband's business trip.
Thank you so much, Councilor Park. I will now entertain a motion to allow Councilor Park's remote participation in this meeting pursuant to Stanton City Council procedural memorandum number three.
So move.
Is there a second?
A second.
Mr. Kessinger, would you please call the roll?
Ms. Woods.
Aye.
Mr. Shepherd.
Aye.
Mr. Overholzer.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Erlewood.
Aye.
Mayor Edwards.
Aye.
Motion carries.
All righty, and Councilor Park, where are you right now? What is your location?
I'm at 3223 South State Street, Ann Arbor, Michigan.
Excellent. Can everybody in the audience hear Ms. Park? And everyone up here can hear? All righty. We will move on to Councilor Campbell. On July 18th, 2025, I received a request from Councilor Campbell to participate remotely in the July 24th, 2025 Stanton City Council meeting due to a personal matter that prevents his physical attendance at the meeting. Pursuant to the Freedom of Information Act, I will now ask Councilor Campbell to state the personal matter that makes him unable to attend tonight's meeting.
Good afternoon. We are on vacation, my family and I.
All righty, I will now entertain a motion to allow Councilor Campbell's remote participation in this meeting pursuant to Stanton City Council procedural memorandum number three.
So move.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Great. Mr. Kessinger, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Overholzer.
Aye.
Ms. Woods.
Aye.
Mr. Shepherd.
Aye.
Ms. Park.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Erlewood.
Aye.
Mayor Edwards.
Aye.
Motion carries.
And Councilor Campbell, can you please tell us the remote location that you're calling in from?
I am at 808 Fourth Street, Ocean City, New Jersey.
Very nice. And everybody in the audience and on the dais can hear him. Excellent. Thank you so much. All righty, let's move on. Item one, the one and only item, I will now entertain a motion to approve, not the only one, to approve the work session and regular meeting agendas.
I move to approve the work session and regular meeting agendas as presented.
Thank you. Councilor Overholzer, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Councilor Woods. Is there any further discussion? Okay. Kyler, Mr. Kessinger, would you please call the roll?
Ms. Park.
Aye.
Mr. Overholzer.
Aye.
Ms. Woods.
Aye.
Mr. Campbell.
Aye.
Mr. Shepherd.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Erlewood.
Aye.
Mayor Edwards.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Item two, we will now move on to our final work session item, a closed meeting. I will now entertain a motion to enter a closed meeting.
Mayor Edwards.
Councilor Woods.
I move to enter a closed meeting for the discussion of the ward of a public contract involving expenditure of public funds for construction services contract where discussion in an open session would adversely affect the bargaining position or negotiating strategy of the city of Stanton pursuant to Virginia Code Section 2 dot 2 dash 3711A29 and discussion of the performance of the city manager pursuant to Virginia Code 2 dash 2, I mean 2 dot 2 dash 3711A1.
Thank you. Is there a second?
No second.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Mr. Kessinger, please call the roll.
Mr. Shepherd.
Aye.
Ms. Park.
Aye.
Mr. Overholzer.
Aye.
Mr. Campbell.
Aye.
Ms. Woods.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Erlewood.
Aye.
Mayor Edwards.
Aye.
Motion carries.
We are now, oh, we are now in closed session. I will now entertain a motion to reconvene in an open meeting.
Mayor Edwards.
Councilor Woods.
I move that council reconvene in an open meeting and certify to the best of each member's knowledge that only lawfully exempted public business matters were discussed and that only public business matters as identified in a closed meeting motion were heard, discussed, or considered in the meeting.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion? Mr. Kessinger, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Shepherd.
Aye.
Ms. Woods.
Aye.
Mr. Overholzer.
Aye.
Mr. Campbell.
Aye.
Ms. Park.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Erlewood.
Aye.
Mayor Edwards.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. The work, I'm sorry, the work session is now adjourned. And it's now seven o'clock and I'd like to call the July 24th, 2025 regular meeting of the Stanton City Council to order. Will you please stand and join me for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Well, you may have noticed that there are only five of us on the dais instead of our usual seven. You'll see that Councilwoman Park is on our television screen and Councilman Campbell is also joining us virtually.
We need to lower the screen here, I think, don't we? So they can see.
So they can.
They have TVs out there.
I mean, you can if you want.
Okay.
This evening's invocation is coming to us this evening from Councilwoman Park.
All right. Well, as some of you guys know, I'm out of town with my husband on some of his business. And on our road trip, it's given me a lot of time to reflect after so many things that we've done between the flood resiliency meeting, the historical markers that were unveiled at Montgomery Hall Park, my cap saw meetings. And so I've just been spending a lot of time thinking about what we do as a city council and especially why we do it. And that led me to, one of my favorite prayers is the Romero prayer. It was written by Bishop Ken Erntner. So it helps now and then to step back and take a long view. The kingdom is not only beyond our efforts, it's even beyond our vision. We accomplish in our lifetime only a tiny fraction of the magnificent enterprise that is God's work. Nothing we do is complete, which is a way of saying that the kingdom always lies beyond us. No statement says all that could be said. No prayer fully expresses our faith. No confession brings perfection. No pastoral visit brings wholeness. No set of goals and objectives includes everything. This is what we are about. We plant the seeds that one day grow. We water seeds already planted, knowing that they hold future promise. We lay foundations that will need further development. We cannot do everything and there is a sense of liberation in realizing that. This enables us to do something and to do it very well. It may be incomplete, but it is a beginning, a step along the way, an opportunity for the Lord's grace to enter and do the rest. We may never see the end results, but that is the difference between the master builder and the worker. We are workers, not master builders, not ministers, not messias. We are prophets of a future not our own.
Thank you, Councilwoman Park. That was lovely. And where are we going? Do you want to explain what's going on with the screen, Mr. Kessinger? I'm sorry.
I wish I could. It's an issue that we've been working on this week. Hopefully it will be resolved soon, but if it gets to be too much, I can just turn the screens off.
Can you push that back up maybe?
Everyone, everyone on Zoom will still be able to see and hear us just fine, so.
Yeah, push that back up because that's very annoying. We apologize for the people here, but at home it should be fine, correct? Mr. Kessinger?
Yes, Ms. Park, you can still see and hear.
Yeah, sadly, it's fine on my end, but I feel bad because it is blinking.
Okay, well, so.
We can hear you fine, though.
Yeah, the audio is fine. So this takes us on to the mayor's report. I just have a few things to share with you. You know, there are many people, many individuals and organizations that do fantastic work in our great city. One of those is the Kiwanis, the Babe Ruth Kiwanis, and this group that meets at the Hometown Grill invited me to join them for lunch and to speak to them about the things that are going on in city council and local government. And I got to eat with them and listen to their concerns and just find out some of the great things that they do. They've been supporting the Babe Ruth League at Gypsy Hill Park for 50 years. They collect donations for folks in need and a myriad of other things. So I wanted to give a shout out to them. I attended the library advisory board meeting last week and I wanted to share that the Friends of the Library, if you haven't heard, have a new drop off location. It's the Christ loose learned church up between North Side, between Colter and Augusta Streets. Please look at the library's website for hours. There are limited hours, but if you're someone who likes to donate books for the annual sale, that's where you'll do it from now on. I'd also like to say that Councilwoman Woods and I had the opportunity to attend a fascinating meeting with the Go Virginia, Go Virginia Region Eight Council. And it's a terrific regional organization that brings together schools, education, businesses, business owners, as well as local government and problem solve on economic issues. And it was fantastic to see how partners work together collaboratively in ways to bring more vocational education, to make sure that kids are coming up and being ready to be employed, but also bringing monies in from our state government, which was really interesting for me to hear. I also want to say that we had a fantastic Fourth of July. I'm sure many of you were out there on the Fourth. Many of us up here on the dais were riding in the truck, but I was told by one of the organizers that we had the biggest crowd in 10 years. So it continues to be an extremely popular and fun family event. So that is all I have for my report. If anyone has anything they'd like to share, please do.
Well, sure. Earlier this month, let's see, I knew you were there as well, but the Cooling Shelter is opening in Augusta Street United Methodist Church. And they're still deciding what, when we met there, they're still deciding what temperature they want to officially have it open for, but it's for, it'll have snacks and cool beverages and just be a place to cool down for the really hot summer days for people that don't have another place to go. And then also just earlier today, I had a chance to meet Dr. Amy Scott, who is the new principal at McSwain, taking over a very capable Ms. Kim Crocker, who's retiring there. But it's great to meet her and McSwain, it was just a great crowd to welcome her.
That's wonderful. Perfect. I'm glad to hear. Anyone else have any comments?
There was a public meeting on the city's flood resiliency plan that's developing. It was a public meeting at the library and there were some helpful inputs shared from some of our residents about their experiences with flooding on their properties. And it would be really helpful to hear from others. There is a survey out, you can look at the city's social media to get the link, but we want the plan to reflect all the conditions, all the issues and the challenges and have awareness of the situations that people are dealing with so it can be a good, comprehensive, robust plan. Also, there was a meeting to unveil historical markers at Montgomery Hall Park on July 11th. Several of us attended that and just a terrific set of displays, I think, that will raise our visibility in the state, attract new people to come see our history. And it's a fascinating reflection on the history of African American community in Stanton as well as specifically the history of Montgomery Hall Park. It's just a great event and terrific markers.
Unfortunately, I miss a lot.
Summertime, we miss a lot.
Yeah, but also health issues and I didn't, was able to join you all on July 4th, unfortunately. Last month, I forgot to mention about the mobile, mobile health, mobile clinic that Augusta Health. I did attend that. So I forgot to mention that last time, that they have their mobile unit up and running that can help out so many people. It could go where the, you know, brick and mortar can't. And it can also help those at the brick and mortar where they don't have to carry all of their stuff in and carry all their stuff out. But it will reach a whole lot more of our citizens that need healthcare. It was great to go in to see it. They can do a lot. So, yeah, I forgot to mention that last month. So I just wanted to bring that to the attention of our community that it is up and running and it's on the move. So, yeah.
Thank you for going to that.
Thank you, Councilor Woods. All righty, so moving on to item A, the consent agenda. Per procedure memorandum number 14, it is the policy of city council to have routine, non-controversial items placed on a consent agenda. All items on the consent agenda will be voted on in one motion. If separate discussion of an item is requested by any member of council, that item shall be removed and considered separately at the end of the regular meeting agenda. Do any members of council wish to remove any items from the consent agenda to be placed at the end of the regular meeting agenda for separate consideration? All righty, I will now entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Madam Mayor, I move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Thank you. Is there a second?
No second.
Any further discussion? And Mr. Kessinger, would you please call the roll?
Woods.
Aye.
Mr. Shepherd.
Aye.
Mr. Campbell.
Aye.
Mr. Overholzer.
Aye.
Ms. Park.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Erlewood.
Aye.
Mayor Edwards.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. Kessinger. Moving on to item B, this evening, we have a special guest, someone new to town, and we will have the introduction of our recently appointed Stanton City School Superintendent, Dr. Eric Irazari. Ms. Beauregard.
Yes, well, I'd like to introduce Dr. Eric Irazari, who's coming to us from Almarle County in the Charlottesville area. And I'd like to invite him up to the podium to introduce himself and say a few words. And I believe he also has some other folks to introduce this evening as well.
Excellent. Good evening and welcome.
Good evening, Mayor Edwards, City Council. Thank you for having me here. I'm grateful to Dr. Siegel and the Stanton City School Board for entrusting me with this opportunity to serve as your superintendent. I'd also like to thank city manager Leslie Beauregard for her support and partnership and her invitation tonight. I want to recognize our school board vice chair, Joanne Jeter, who's here with us. Sorry, she's behind the posts. And also our new finance director, Katina Clayder-Fry is here as well.
Good evening.
In just a short time, my family and I have experienced the warmth and hospitality that makes Stanton so special. We've been welcomed with genuine kindness. I think I've traveled everywhere with the Venables at all, at all the events in the past three weeks. And we're discovering quickly that Stanton has no shortage on great places to eat. My kids are quickly checking out the pizza options here in town. In the coming weeks, I'll be doing my 100-day entry plan, which will include a series of listening and learning sessions across the city with students, staff, families, community members, business members. And as I begin this role, I look forward to working closely with all of you to help keep Stanton a great place to live, work, and raise a family. By continuing the partnership between the city and our city schools, we can ensure that every child feels seen, supported, inspired to succeed, and ultimately becomes a thoughtful, contributing, productive member of our city. So I just want to say thank you for having me and thank you for the welcome.
Wonderful.
Welcome.
Will you, anybody have any questions for, prior to we did it?
Glad you're here.
Oh, I'm glad to be here.
Glad you're here.
Glad to be here.
Welcome.
Yep, and I hope to see you all at some of the events and we'll see you in town.
Absolutely.
Yes, thanks for getting out and about.
All right.
And welcome. Welcome to Stanton.
Thank you so much.
All righty, moving on to item C, we have two public hearings this evening. Item C is a public hearing in consideration of a request by Nathaniel R. Bradley, Warren D. Bradley, and Amy E. Shelley to vacate, discontinue, and abandon that portion of undeveloped Peach Street lying within the bounds of 445 Peach Street, 444 Peach Street, and 125A Greenwood Road of the Hidden Glen Platte. Ms. Beauregard.
Mr. Tim Hartless is here this evening to go through this item.
Good evening, Mr. Hartless.
Good evening, Mayor Edwards, members of the council. It's a pleasure to be here with you tonight. This is a vacation request for two sections of undeveloped street, undeveloped Peach Street and undeveloped Pinehurst Road. This area was initially platted as part of the Sam Gardner addition in Augusta County and then was annexed into the city in 1986. In 2003, the area was replatted as part of the Hidden Glen Platte. It appears that at that time, the intent of the Hidden Glen Platte was to vacate these two sections of undeveloped street. But it does not appear that city council ever adopted an ordinance of vacation or that an ordinance was ever recorded in the office of the clerk of the circuit court. The applicant owns property at 445 Peach Street, which they wish to sell, and that closing has been delayed until this issue with the undeveloped streets can be resolved. And that resolution needs to come through the formal vacation process. Staff has reviewed the request and has identified no issues. The portions of undeveloped streets have already been replatted and developed. The city has no interest in them and does not intend to ever see them developed or incorporated into the city's street systems. And these undeveloped streets do not impact the usability of any of the other streets or alleys in the area. The Hidden Glen Platte included a 50-foot public utility easement, which was reserved to the city. However, that easement was never officially dedicated with a deed of dedication. So staff has asked the applicant to draft the necessary deed and for that deed to be recorded at the same time as the ordinance of vacation. Planning Commission conducted a public hearing at its June 18th, 2025 meeting. The commission, as I said, conducted the public hearing. No one spoke in opposition to the request and the commission unanimously recommended approval of the requested vacations with one condition, and that is that the request shall not be placed on a city council agenda until after a deed of dedication for the public utility easement has been drafted by the applicant and reviewed by city staff. Since the planning commission meeting, the applicant has drafted the necessary deed. Staff has reviewed it and made revisions, and this item is now ready for city council's consideration, consistent with the planning commission's recommendation. And I would remind you that these are two separate items. They were handled under one briefing, but we do need to conduct two separate public hearings tonight, one for each street to be vacated.
Yes, sir.
If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them now or I can come back after the public hearing.
Do we have any questions for Mr. Hartless? Go ahead and do the public hearing then.
All right.
Thank you, sir. In a moment, I will open up the public hearing. This is a time that council sets aside to hear from citizens and others about this specific topic on the agenda. We ask that you please give your name, your address, and then keep your remarks to five minutes or less. When you reach the five-minute time limit, I will let you know that your time limit has expired. For our Zoom participants, please raise your hand now if you wish to speak on this particular public hearing. If you raise your hand during this public hearing, you will also be able to raise your hand during this council meeting for other public hearings and matters of the public. And please keep your comments to five minutes as well. Once everyone who wishes to speak has had an opportunity, I will then close the public hearing. I will now open up public hearings. So if you wish to speak, please approach the podium. Yes, ma'am? Please approach the podium. We will alternate between people physically present and those calling in on Zoom.
My name is Laura Johnson. I live at 256 Rain Tree Road in Verona.
Good evening.
My uncle William Barclay passed away.
Ma'am, is this about this current agenda? I'm sorry. Thank you. Okay.
Passed away June the 20th. He owns lot four and five of that section. In finding the will, we found that I am the executor of all of it. I would like to sell those lots, so I need some kind of access to them.
Right. Thank you. Thank you so much. Do we have any hands raised on Zoom?
No, ma'am, we have no hands raised on Zoom.
Wouldn't anyone else like to? Mr. Hanson. Okay, no.
Wandering.
Mr. Hanson, are you speaking?
Oh, I'm wandering.
Oh.
Dramatic pause.
Yeah, that was dramatic.
Sorry. Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of council. Daniel Hanson with Ballser and Associates. The survey on the, sort of drafting some of the information here, as well as what took place about 10-ish years ago when we were originally trying to do this. Mr. Bradley is also here as the applicant. Most of us are just going to say if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them, but I'm not sure, I think Mrs., what was it, Mrs. Barclay? Is that correct?
My name is, I think, Mr. Barclay.
I believe that they own the property just south of what we're talking about. So that part, portion of Pinehurst is not a part of what we're looking for right now. I think Mr. Hartless is kind of looking at that himself, just so we can kind of give you guys some clarification on the point that's been brought up that we weren't expecting to say the truth. Can I answer that? I know that's usually not a Q and A situation here.
Jason.
Can we have Mr. Hartless come up?
So the code of Virginia requires that we notify all of the properties that are adjacent to these streets that would be vacated. So although this is not directly adjacent, it does touch a portion of it. That's why you received a letter. It's, Mr. Hanson is correct. This vacation does not impact your access, but you received a letter because you're an adjacent property owner.
Just to be clear, the vacation is not going to keep her from the ability to access that lot?
No, it does not. It does not impact her ability to access.
All righty, thank you very much. Does anyone else have questions for Mr. Hartless, Mr. Hanson? Hey, I will entertain a motion.
The public hearing is.
Oh, I'm so sorry. I always forget this. The public hearing is now closed. Thank you. I usually write across here.
Madam Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I move the council adopt the ordinance and approve the vacation as recommended by the planning commission.
Thank you. Is there a second?
A second.
Thank you, Councilor Woods. Is there any further discussion? Mr. Kessinger, would you please call the roll?
Ms. Park.
Ms. Park.
Aye.
Mr. Campbell.
Aye.
Mr. Shepherd.
Aye.
Mr. Overholzer.
Aye.
Ms. Woods.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Erlewood.
Aye.
Mayor Edwards.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. Kessinger. And that takes us on to item D. A public hearing in consideration to, of a request to vacate, discontinue, and abandon that portion of undeveloped Pinehurst Road lying within the bounds of 445 Peach Street and 125A Greenwood Road of the Hidden Glen Platte. Ms. Beauregard. I think, I think Tim Hartless is also gonna, or did you want to say anything else or are we just going into the public hearing?
No, I covered this one in my, in my first brief.
Okay, so we can just go right into the public hearing. All righty, I will now open the public hearing. So if you wish to speak, please approach the podium and we will alternate between individuals physically present and those that have their hands raised via the Zoom platform. Again, this public hearing is for item D only, and you were asked not to speak on any topic that does not directly relate to this. Is there anyone physically present here? Do we have any hands raised on Zoom?
No, ma'am, we have no hands raised.
No further questions? I'll entertain a motion.
Got it.
Oh, I'm so sorry. I, thank you. Public hearing is now closed. I'll entertain a motion now.
Madam Mayor, I move the City Council adopt the ordinance and approve the vacation as recommended by the Planning Commission.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Is there further discussion? And Mr. Kessinger, please call the roll.
Mr. Overholzer.
Aye.
Ms. Woods.
Aye.
Mr. Campbell.
Aye.
Mr. Shepherd.
Aye.
Ms. Park.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Arrowood.
Aye.
Mayor Edwards.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. Kessinger. We're moving on to item E. An update on Stanton's pathway to affordable housing and housing for working families. The City of Stanton's Housing Strategy, Ms. Beauregard.
Yeah, so it's been about a year since we started down this road. And Ms. Joyce is here this evening to provide an update of the work that has been done so far and I guess some strategies going forward.
Yeah, I guess that would be.
Yeah, I'll remember. You've got to remind me.
Good old technology. There we go. Good evening, council members and mayor. I hope everyone's doing well tonight.
Good evening, Ms. Joyce.
We're going to talk about housing. Back in September, we began the housing strategy for the city. And as we've talked about it with you all many times, it's, the housing strategy is really the plan to begin our work on housing. So this is a plan for a start, not a plan for completion. As you also know with housing, it's a constant challenge. So it's nothing that we, a problem to solve. It's something that we're always dealing with. So tonight, we're going to talk about where we are with the strategy. You all have in front of you copies of the slides, but more importantly, basically, the heart of the strategy. So we'll talk about that right now. Before we get started, I'd like to thank all the members of our housing strategy work group that participated in the meetings we had. We had four meetings. They've also been helpful in providing comments and guidance to council members. Councilmember Wood and Councilmember Arrowood sat on the work group. Several other council members came to different meetings that we had. We also have three members of our work group here tonight. Susan Venable, who was our representative from the DEI Commission. Nehemiah Velez with the Stanton Redevelopment and Housing Authority. And way in the back there, Sharon Coppola, with the Renewing Homes of Greater Augusta. So they provided a lot of expertise for the plan. We also did a lot of public engagement to get people's thoughts about the plan. We had four engagement sessions. Two were virtual, two were in-person at the public library. We had a total of 45 people attend. And included on the slide here are the three main questions that we asked people. We also did an online survey. We've, so far, we've had 149 responses. We're going to keep it open until next week because my goal was 150. So it's still on the city website under the Community Development section. If you look under the housing and click on that, it'll take you to the Housing Strategy Survey. As part of the strategy, when you all see the final document, we will have a summary of all the thoughts and opinions, but also in the appendices of the plan, we'll have all the comments that people gave you. I think it's really interesting to see a lot of the commonalities. People's comments were about cost of housing and then just other things that were important to them in preserving housing in the community. With the housing strategy, and you all have seen this before when I came to you in March, our three goals are producing housing, preserving housing, and providing housing stability. As far as a housing strategy goes, there's no requirement to complete a housing strategy. It's not like a comprehensive plan where you have to have one of those done and adopted every five years. We are doing this because we want to have a focused way to deal with some of the housing challenges that we face to be able to work well with our housing partners in the city and to be able to provide more housing in the city of Stanton. Our housing strategies, you've also seen before. They are similar to the ones that you have seen in March, except for one addition. On the slides, I've mentioned them in the handout that you all have gotten. You have the housing strategies in detail. You also have the action plan that spells out not only what the strategies are, but who's, the parties responsible, what kinds of funding we might need, who, timeframe for when things will be accomplished over our first 18 years, or, excuse me, 18 months of the implementation plan for the strategy. These are the rest of the strategies here. In order to move into that implementation phase, which we're actually starting this month as we complete pulling the document together, there are three things that we would need and like to have happen in order to move forward with the housing strategy and our housing goals. The first is to form a housing commission to help guide us in the housing of the city and different projects and goals that we have. We also hope to do a housing conditions windshield survey and assessment. We would like to apply for a grant from Virginia Housing to have that done and work with the Virginia Tech Housing Center and their students to help us get a broad overview of some of the infill properties and properties that might be blighted or aren't being used effectively so that we can look to see if housing would be a good option for those. We also are going to create what we're calling a Housing and Stability Services Grant Resource Guide. That's a much bigger name than what it's going to be. It's really going to be something that I can use and hand out to people as we get calls for housing services that are available in the city. We have already, through the Saw Housing Group and some other organizations, really good resource lists. So this is almost going to be a resource list of resource lists. So that'll just provide a one-stop for us to be able to give people information right away. There's my contact information. The chapter that you all are receiving with the assumption goals, the strategies, the action plan, and then there's also a matrix at the end of that to show you how all those tasks are intermingled together over that 18-month period. Please feel free to look at those and provide me with any feedback you'd like. Doesn't have to be tonight. Give yourselves a chance to look at that. And if you have any comments, I'm glad to incorporate those. The one new strategy that I wanted to mention that was not in before was helping with services for the unhoused population of Stanton. And so that is a newest strategy. We have 11 strategies now, and they're all in that. Other than that, I'm glad to take questions or answer things about specific topics if that's helpful.
Ms. Joyce, is the same group going to continue and perhaps become the commission? Do you, have you talked about the next step for the group itself?
I think the next step for the group, when we had our last meeting in April, was I was heavily encouraging the members to apply for the commission. I think we'll follow the rules that you all usually do for forming and staffing commissions, but I'm hoping some of our members will apply. They were really great help.
Was there a timeline set to develop the commission?
I need to talk to the city manager to see. Since we're in the midst of summer right now, I feel like that won't start until about fall. I have in the matrix for all the activities given us a few months of doing other things for the strategies that don't necessarily have to involve the commission yet to give that a chance to be up and running. The other thing I did want to mention too is as far as funding goes for all the strategies that we have included, the only funding we're requesting is the use of our block grant funds, which we currently use. And then in the CIP, we included $30,000 for this year. And so those are the only funds that we're needing for this. We're really hoping, as a result of these 11 strategies, to come up with some other funding sources to do more implementation of more complex projects as we go along. So this is a very lean economical housing strategy.
And Ms. Joyce, thank you for your leadership on this. It's been a very great process all the way through. And you did bring up something I wanted to mention as well because there was, yeah, the $30,000 on that is really just, we see that kind of a seed money. Because this, a commission would help administer other monies as well for specific affordable housing projects and steer those in their most effective way to use them.
Yes, that's very correct. Any other questions, comments?
Ms. Joyce, I'm sure you've had this question multiple times, but could you explain how the Stanton Commission will work with the Saw Housing?
That's another good question. I think for right now, the Housing Commission would be working on the goals that we have and the strategies in this housing strategy. As you can see, when you look over the action plan, anything that involves either Saw Housing or other organizations we work with, they're included as partnering organizations. And we also include the Housing Commission in those strategies as well. I think after we're working through this, they're getting on board and developing a role, then we will continuously connect with Saw Housing for our part in that regional effort. And one of our assumptions here with the plan is that we will not develop or do any activities or programs that compete with the other organizations. We will support what's done in the region. There's no need to do what's already being done. We want to help and support what's being done and then augment that to fill any needs we have just in the city.
Thank you. That helps. Definitely helps understand the two roles.
Anything else?
Other questions? Thank you, Ms. Joyce. Are we going to be seeing you again?
Yep, I'm still here. I don't go away. I'm like a bad penny.
Okay, that's going to take us to item F. Consideration of a Resolution Authorizing the Adoption of the Fiscal Year 25 Annual Action Plan for the City of Stanton and the substantial, did I read that right? Amendment to the 2024-2028 Consolidated Plan and FY24 Annual Action Plan through the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, Community Development Block Grant Program Fund.
Yes, I've got my other hat on now.
Okay.
Okay. The City of Stanton was designated an entitlement community by the Department of Housing and Urban Development back in 2019. And so we get an entitlement allotment of community development block grant funds every year. This time of year, we come to you all to pass a resolution to adopt the annual action plan for the upcoming year, which will be for us. We follow the federal year, so that will be FY 2025. If you look at the handout that I gave you, the very back page gives you a breakdown of all the projects and the different amounts of funding that we will be doing. We're looking to fund projects very similar to what we did last year. We are receiving $317,797 for this upcoming year, which will start in October. We are allowed to offer 15% of that funding for public services for nonprofit organizations that we work with. We have a 20% cap on admin, which it's a very highly bureaucratic program. So there's lots of that that we have to do. And then the majority of the funding goes for structural projects that benefit people with low to moderate incomes in our community. Of the structural projects this year, also as seed money really for our, looking at properties that may have blight that needs to be removed or ways to put those blighted, derelict properties back into use, we have allotted $76,598. The two other structural projects we have are, one for Renewing Homes of Greater Augusta for $65,000. And they provide essential needed repairs and accessibility improvements to people who are elderly or with disabilities that have low to moderate incomes. And then we're also giving $65,000, which is a continuation basically of the funding we gave them previously to help with improvements of the buildings and units at the Elizabeth Miller Garden and Ferri Court apartment units here in Stanton. And that's, again, $65,000. That's for a total of $206,598. With our 15%, and that's all we're allowed to do, we have asked our HUD representatives just as many communities have if there's a way to give more to our nonprofits. And they were not, they said it takes the act of Congress. So that was shot down. But we have six organizations, and we're giving them all equal amount of funding this year. The reason being, these are organizations we funded in the past. They are all facing budget cuts for the coming year, and we wanted to make sure that we could keep them going with whatever help that we could give. We're giving each of them $7,940. And those organizations are Blue Ridge CASA, Blue Ridge Legal Services, The Valley Mission, VPAS's Meals on Wheels Program, VPAS's Senior Transportation Program, and Valley Supportive Housing. All of these services that they provide, and it's in the action plan that you all have in your packet, either provide housing services or provide wraparound services that keep people stable in their housing. And then the final part of the grant is the administration, and that's $63,559. So we're going to be asking you all to approve the annual action plan. This is the first year we've done the annual action plan in-house, and it's always a fun project. And we also are going to ask you all to amend, provide a substantial amendment to our last plan, which was last year, but is also attached to the five-year plan. So that's why it's an amendment to both things. We have had a request from Habitat for Humanity. We had originally allocated $60,000 for the A Street project. They have a new director, and there's a lot of exciting things going on with Habitat right now. But they're not at that place of being able to spend that money for that. So they would like to use that money to give salaries to their construction workers to assist Renewing Homes of Greater Augusta in their repair work. So we will be actually helping two of our sub-grantees by moving the money. We're not moving it out of Habitat. We're just moving it for the tasks that they're doing. That will be different. So I'm happy to answer any questions about the current year's action plan or the amendment.
Well, I do have one question. It's about the light removal.
Yes.
Can you expand on that a little bit? How that happens?
Yes. Right now, most of that kind of stuff, looking at properties that, you may have a property that is not safe. It's derelict. No one's living there. It could be there's several heirs that live out of state that don't want to necessarily do anything to the property. This is a chance to help with removing a dangerous structure, working with the heirs to see if there's a way that we can get that property so someone else could either build on it. If it's a property where there may be more maintenance or repair issues, we may not have to tear it down but could put that back into the housing stock. So that's what we're doing. The community development, the building, the building division always puts a little bit of money aside to do that. But we have some properties. We don't know all the properties we have, which is why we want to do the windshield survey. But this, again, will help us be able to start reusing existing properties and get them back into housing stock.
Does windshield, I'm sorry. Does windshield refer to driving around and literally looking out your windshield?
Yes, that's what I thought, too. I think it's because you are not having individual appointments necessarily at people's houses like you might if you're doing an appraisal. It can be a drive-by survey, but I think using college students like at Virginia Tech, and we may reach out to Mary Baldwin as well, that may be more of a group walking in a neighborhood and filling out a survey.
Interesting.
Lexington just completed a survey like that. So there's precedent. We have a sort of a structure and a model to follow. Following up on the dilapidated, the light removal process. So that primarily. Following up on the dilapidated, the blight removal process. So that primarily is a property owner-initiated process where they would apply for help to...
We have to work all, all of that out. I think at first, it will be properties where there may be some safety issues, and that's come about. And usually, the property owner may not even, the original property owner may not even be around, so it is contacting heirs and things like that. There's no intention on, on my end or our housing program to do anything like eminent domain or anything in that vein. This is more of, are there properties where we can put them back into the housing stock? People may need some assistance to go through that process. People may be interested in selling that property, but hadn't been approached, and those kinds of things. As part of the housing strategy, we're going to work out a policy so that, once we know what we're looking at, then we can say, okay, this may mean we need to add these things into a policy, and you all would see all of that stuff.
Need to be criteria.
Yes, yes.
So is that number, then, for the blight removal, an arbitrary number, or are there specific properties in mind?
Yes, it's an arbitrary number.
Okay. Yeah, and I know, in my experience with, with some blighted properties, when building with Habitat, there'd be ones where the deed hasn't been touched in 80 years.
Yes.
Literally 80 years, and, and none of the heirs that might own it live in the city, and nobody's, it's easier if nobody's paying the taxes.
Right.
Uh, because then you can move forward on something, but often someone is, and it's just sitting there for a couple of generations, becoming a protected skunk habitat or something like that. So it would be wonderful to see that, because that would be a great source of infill housing for us in the core of the city.
Yes, and we've already had conversations with the housing authority and Habitat about those situations, too. So we would be reaching out to our partners for the actual, if there is housing that needs to be installed or rehabbed or things like that. So we would be kind of the coordinating arm of that, and then we would definitely want our housing partners to step in on the housing part of it.
Excellent. No more questions. We'll say thank you and, and good evening for all your, thank you for all your help.
Would you mind passing the resolution?
Geez, I'll entertain a motion. Actually, I would, Ms. Joyce.
We'd let you sit down.
So I will entertain a motion.
Madam Mayor, I move that...
Vice Mayor.
Thank you. I move that City Council approve the resolution authorizing the adoption of the FY 2025 Annual Action Plan and the substantial amendment to the 2024-2028 Consolidated Plan and FY 2024 Annual Action Plan, and authorize the city manager to execute the sub-recipient agreements and associated documents with agencies recommended to receive HUD CDBG funds. I'll say it again, just don't scoff.
I have a second. Is there any further discussion? Mr. Kessaker, will you please call the roll?
Ms. Woods?
Aye.
Mr. Shepherd?
Aye.
Ms. Park?
Aye.
Mr. Overholzer?
Aye.
Mr. Campbell?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Erwood?
Aye.
Mayor Edwards?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
I would like to say thank you for helping our community members with lower to moderate income be able to, to have access to services that they might not otherwise have access to. I wanted to do all the positive things first, but just on a quick note, in the budget process for the coming year, we only have the president's recommended budget. We don't have the other budget yet, so this may not be a reality at all. But just to let you all know, what, what we may be dealing with is, the CDBG program is not included for funding next year. So I don't know that that's, will be a true reality. I think there's enough worth in the program across the country that that won't happen, but I just wanted to let you all know now, in case we need to do any action down the road, just to show that it is well-used here. So, thank you very much.
Appreciate that, Abby, to say thank you, Ms. Joyce. Moving on to matters from the city manager.
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Beauregard.
I have several items this evening. The first is that applications for the 2025 Stanton Citizen University will open on Monday, August 4th. The applications will go live at 8:00 a.m., and they fill up quickly, and it is first come, first served, and we're going to be having about 25 participants, just like last year. So just a quick summary, this is a 10-week program. It gives residents a hands-on learning about how our local government works and creates a direct connection between citizens and city staff. It runs early September through mid-November, meets mostly on Tuesdays from 6:00 to 8:00 at various city locations. And as I said before, will accept 25 participants, so I encourage folks to, on August 4th, if you're interested, to go and get on the link, which will be on our homepage, I assume, and fill out an application. Also, maybe you've seen that we're going to be putting some picnic tables at the Wharf to help doing, be doing some placemaking out there, and we have a, something going on with the Stanton Augusta Arts Center right now, as far as a public art initiative. You can vote on what, up to five designs that you like to help bring color and creativity to the Wharf. And if you go to the Stanton Augusta Arts Center website, you can vote for the picnic tables that you like, the designs you like. That is through July 31st. And after that, they will be painted, of course, and installed at the Wharf. And then finally, this evening, the, starting on Monday, this next Monday, July 28th through Friday, August 1st, the RMA Lot, and if you don't know what that is, that is the parking lot in front of Mill Street Grill, this large city lot that's the coin lot. That will be closed. Public Works will be replacing underground stormwater infrastructure, and we need to close the entire lot for that. So that being said, there's lots of other options, such as the new street parking garage, the Wharf parking lot, Mill Street, there's street parking, of course, and if you go an extra block, you'll find the Hardy Lot. So we appreciate your patience, and hopefully, we anticipate that will only take a week to complete, and then it'll open back up. That's all I have this evening.
Excellent. Thank you, Ms. Beauregard. This is the part of the City Council's agenda entitled Matters from the Public. It is a time that council sets aside to hear from citizens and others about a wide variety of subjects. A copy of the Stanton City Council's Matters from the Public rules are available in paper form at the clerk's desk and online on the City of Stanton's webpage. You are asked to familiarize yourself with those rules before commenting. Please come to the podium or begin your call, identify yourself, and complete your remarks within five minutes. As a reminder, this is a time for council to listen. If you would like an answer to a question or a follow-up to your comment, please speak with the city manager, Leslie Beauregard, after the meeting. Would anybody like to speak? Good evening. Welcome, sir.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Madam Mayor, Mr. Vice Mayor, members of council, I'm the boys' tennis coach at Stanton High School, and as a proud graduate of this school system, I wanted to bring to your attention some considerations. With me tonight, I have two volunteer assistant coaches, Bill Fitzgibbon and Bill Terry, who was also an instructor at the high school, and Ashley Kane, who is a parent advocate who's had two children in the program. I want to address some short-term things and some long-term things. Currently, I want to thank the city for enhancing things at Montgomery Hall Park with three courts. It's certainly a better situation than what we did have when everybody was crammed into Gypsy Hill Park, both for practices and matches. But there are some drawbacks that I want to bring up. We do have to share space with pickleball, which has gotten really popular, but with pickleballers coming in at the time of matches, it brings some confusion with parking and court space. So Mrs. Kane may have some more things to say on those matters and whatever blanks to fill in. Also, the last time I checked, the porta potty that is nearest the courts had no lock on it. Now, I don't know if the city building that's up top is unlocked after 5:00. I don't know. But there's also parking difficulties coming in and out, and with young drivers on the team and pickleballers. It gets congested at times. At Gypsy Hill, the courts do need some work, and I think if you go over there, you'll notice that. But I have some good news, I think, that will be elaborated on. There are arrangements to reconnect with Mary Baldwin, and this is a short-term goal, to be able to use their courts again. For three years, we were able to do that, and it made a very efficient for matches and, and practices. So I hope that those community relations can be reconnected, and I think there's movement in that direction. So the Mary Baldwin situation would be a good Plan B. But for Plan A, I came to coach in 2018, and there were six courts at the high school, and when the renovations were done, they were done away with. There was even bleachers on the hill. Some of you may remember how that looked. But at the current time, we're at a court disadvantage as far as matches. We're the only school in the city-county area without courts for matches that are near or at the school. Now, Mary Baldwin is closer. Fort Defiance has six courts at the middle school adjacent to this high school. Waynesboro has six. Wilson has six. Stuart Strasf has four at their middle school, and Buffalo Gap and Riverheads have three. But as far as location, for matches at the current high school, there are at least three options. The bus loop is a flat area. There might be transportation issues that would have to be addressed. Certainly, there would. There's also the McSwain Field, which is being used for practices now for the high school. And there's also, I think, an area below the current track, which has some space that tennis courts could be put in. Now, I do know, many years ago, the courts at the high school were more than adequate, and I think they were put in very soon after I graduated, which is just a few decades ago. So I would just like to bring those matters to council. I think Mrs. Kane was at the school board meeting in May and was referred back to this meeting. So I just want to thank you for your time. Somebody else might want to add on or fill in the gaps.
Thank you, Coach. Could you state your name for, for the record?
Oh, sorry.
You're fine.
Bill Meade.
Thank you, Mr. Meade.
Thank you.
Thanks for continuing to coach.
Is there any hand raised on Zoom, Mr. Kessaker?
No, ma'am, we have no hands raised on Zoom.
Good evening.
All right, well, good evening, Madam Mayor, Vice Mayor, and members of the council. Nice to see you all. Thank you for your service. I'm Ashley Kane. I live here in the city on Valley View Drive, and I'm here because I'm the sort of unofficial team mom for the boys' tennis team at SHS, and I'm also the president of the SHS PTSA. So I have a heart for Stanton City schools and for SHS in particular. This spring during the tennis season, I realized that while our courts are great and beautiful at Montgomery Hall, the surroundings are quite hazardous for spectators. Parking and walkways leave a lot to be desired. They're a problem. Professionally, I'm actually a physical therapist, so I watched in horror watching some people navigate around who were a little older, like grandparents of players. Getting at that, my own mom, who's 88, uses a roller later, has some health issues and is oxygen-dependent, and was dying to see her 16-year-old grandson play tennis. You know, we decided it wasn't safe for her to make her way to Montgomery Hall, and so we took her to away matches, which was a little inconvenient but safe, so good enough. Getting back to the main issue here, though, I met with SHS administration and Superintendent Smith, when he was still here, in June, about these issues and started working on them. And while a tentative solution that Coach Meade mentioned with Mary Baldwin is coming together, I do believe it's not final, and it doesn't address all the problems, because practice will still be happening at Montgomery Hall Park. So as a parent of a 16-year-old driving a car that I insure, the matches are, are going to be less of an issue probably, but the practice, which happens a lot more often, right, is at, you know, Montgomery Hall Park with a kind of tight parking area. And if you can imagine, 16 boys on the team, right, and while they do carpool, still it ends up being a lot of cars, especially when the pickleballers show up. And so they often do, and they often bring multiple cars as well. And so it's pretty crowded and busy. Parks and Rec, I've talked to them as well, and I'm, you know, aware that they know about the situation, and, you know, they don't have funds allocated for addressing the parkway, parking or the walkway improvements currently, at least not to my awareness. And so what would be, you know, ideal, again, would be maybe having dedicated courts at SHS, but that's not what we have quite yet. Dealing with that or mentioning that, you know, we're the only high school in the area that has this situation, really, and we're the only one that has pickleball lines drawn on our courts that we're using right now. Hopefully, we'll be at Mary Baldwin. That won't be an issue for our matches. It does make line calls difficult. You know, tennis, I'd like to point out, is a sport that people can play throughout a lifetime, right? And so it's pretty accessible. Not having courts at SHS means that our PE classes can't teach tennis, and they used to when we had courts there. And so from my perspective as a parent, too, you know, equity-wise, it would be great to have tennis courts at SHS, because it would allow all to, all students an opportunity to learn the sport. And of course, as a physical therapist, I think activity and physical activity in particular is great. So I'm mainly here to make you aware, because you can't know if we don't bring issues to you, but I'm also here to encourage you to please consider the needs of our schools and city. And, you know, a great sys, a great school system and with a vibrant high school is an asset and attractive for growth. Please carefully consider and fund these initiatives if and when Stanton City School Board or Parks and Rec Department request funds to improve the tennis facilities in our fine city. I would appreciate it, and I think others would, too. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Mr. Kessker, do we have any hands raised?
No, ma'am, we have no hands raised.
Do we have any more people who would like to approach the podium?
Hello. My name is Deborah Kushner.
Good evening.
I'm a Stanton City resident. Good evening, and thanks to you all for serving our community in this incredibly difficult time when very little seems normal. So much of our community is terrified and are depressed for ample reasons. Our constitutional rights, civil liberties, and whole departments and branches of our government are being erased daily. It's really easy to be immobilized. The threat of ICE raids looms large for our immigrant community neighbors. No, we're not Los Angeles, New York City, or Texas, but ICE is close by. Some of our neighbors are organizing mutual aid and other supports, and more is needed. As we're seeing, it's not just immigrants who are being targeted and taken. These actions are escalating and will escalate further. In 2019, I volunteered in the Farmville Detention Center, one of the two detention centers in our state, through the Amica Center for Immigrant Rights. When I was volunteering, it was known as the CARE Coalition, and we interviewed people and advised them of their legal rights. And even at that time, communicative diseases ran rampant in overcrowded dorm rooms housing more than 50 people each. I just recall lots of barbed wire, locking metal doors slamming loudly shut, and I also remember that without exception, our interviewees were polite, warm, and appreciative. Detention centers are big business, amped-up versions of our prisons. The day after the last inauguration, stock in the two biggest detention center corporations soared by 30 and 43%. by 30 and 43% respectively. Now immigration enforcement has an additional $170,000 billion, excuse me, $170 billion to play with. I can assure you that comfort for the incarcerated is not a priority. Stanton now has surveillance cameras throughout the city. They're known as automated license plate readers. And in November, the pilot program became contracted, increasing the number of cameras from three to nine. The promise of reducing crime through technology is compelling, but privacy is at risk. The US is second only to China in surveilling its communities. ALPRs have a high error rate, which the main vendor of these cameras, Flock, downplays, usually blaming user error. In Texas, the cameras were used to track a woman who was suspectives of self managing and abortion. That's far from the only such scenario. And despite lacking a formal agreement with ICE, records indicate that local police conducted over 4,000 lookups related to immigration. And just this month, ICE tapped into Richmond, Virginia's Flock camera system. Flock maintains the responsibility lies with individual law enforcement agencies, distancing itself from accountability. Flock's plans are now to use drones also to compile data. This is mega business, furthering trends to militarize law enforcement under the guise of safety. The militarization trend began in the 1960s to calm white fears. 9/11 brought another huge jump in the trend. And between just 1998 and 2014, the dollar value of military hardware sent police departments skyrocketing from 9.4 million to 796 million. FedEx trucks now sport surveillance cameras. ICE can now tap into Ring camera systems. Palantir has been tasked with compiling a database on each American. Running out of time. Basically, contracts can be signed, and contracts can also be broken. Waynesboro had Flock cameras that are now non operational. As a county commissioner in an Ohio county that canceled its Flock contract, put, "Once recorded, you lose control over that data." So we are mass surveilling our citizens through these license plate readers without strict controls over data. The ACLU has major concerns about the Flock system. I just want to encourage us to protect each other. Think about our neighbors who might not look like us or speak English. And thank you for all you do for us.
Thank you very much. Mr. Kessinger, is there anybody on Zoom? Do we have a hand raised?
We have no hands raised.
Do we have any more participants that would like to speak? Nope. This evening's, oh, okay. Good evening.
Good evening, Annemar State in Virginia. So I got a short list here in no particular order. I believe the city manager's signature is on those Flock cameras, so she could also sign to take it off. Secondly, I think something that the residents and citizens in Stanton could put together themselves would be very useful to have would be a list or a GIS layer, a map for all of the short term rentals that are here in Stanton, since we're talking about housing availability. It'd be real nice to know how much empty housing there is on any given weekend, weeknight, at any time of year when people need a place to stay and there's plenty of housing. That would be a good citizen led project, or perhaps the city could take it upon itself to be transparent. Another thing that's actually quite important, I've run into it several times in the last week or so, and it's that I noticed that there are a lot of old and broken links to very important information on the city of Stanton website and webpages that exit from the city of Stanton website. I know there's the disclaimer that says you're now exiting the city of Stanton website. We're not responsible for links. But when they when they link to things like mandatory data that's reported, say, from law enforcement agencies and things like that, that some of our departments in the city of Stanton are required to have a link on a city of Stanton operated webpage, what they're required to have that on their on their webpage, and that link doesn't work, or a resident has to go hunting around. It assumes that every visitor to that webpage is familiar with the internet, has the has, you know, their their device updated, has the time, has the patience, whatever. It should be one click every time it should go to the right place. So there needs to be a thorough audit of the web links in the city of Stanton website in in its entirety by the webmaster to confirm if all those links still work and if the people and positions linked are all still current and if there are old or duplicate links and webpages that can be removed. Because nobody has time to be clicking on old dead links and getting the 404 when they're trying to find out something. And then they call up and they have to waste someone's time here at City Hall who doesn't know what the problem is. And then they have to go look, and then you have two or three people, you know, hunting down the wrong hole. So those are just some things to think about. I appreciate the comments that were made just before me. Schools starting up, we all know that ICE can go into churches, can go into schools. I know that this is not a place for answers from this council, but it's disappointing and quite alarming that this council has not found a way to be proactive in putting out a statement about what it is willing to do and what it is not willing to do in terms of what's going to happen when they come knocking here. What are you going to do when they drag a parent out of a school who has to pick up their kid? Because you're going to be responsible for that. No plan in place, you're responsible. License plates readers with your signature on them. Beauregard, you're responsible for that. So have a plan in place because when that day comes, you know, thoughts and prayers aren't going to cut it. So you need a plan. And that day could come anytime now. $170 billion is a lot of money. We don't have that kind of money to fix this town. So get something together. We got Stanton Cross and sending out there. Maybe they can build a camp out there. Are you going to say yes? You going to let them do it? Buy a lot of stuff in this town? Maybe the price is right.
Thank you, sir. Your time is is up. Thank you. Mr. Kessinger, do we have any hands raised online?
No, ma'am, we have no hands raised.
Anyone else willing to speak would like to speak? So this meeting of the Stanton City Council council is adjourned.